I want to call the meeting to order. Welcome everybody to the Laverne Planning Commission July 26, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. meeting. We do have a forum. Our first item of business is to approve the meeting minutes from the June 28, 2022 regular meeting. We entertain a motion.
Motion to approve as submitted.
Motion approved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. First item under old business, site plan. Commercial Shell Building Lot 3, new building totaling 11,400 square feet on 1.96 acres, requested by James Lukens. Property located at 5486 Murphysboro Road, tax map 18B, Group E, Parcel 5.02. C2 Highway Service Zoning District, property owned by Jahid Sharifi, Jasheed Mohibi, and Payman Bezuri. Mr. Logan.
This item has withdrawn.
Thank you, sir. Item number two, site plan, 290 Tech Park Industrial, new building totaling 48,000 square feet on 4.47 acres, requested by former Lucas. Property located at 290 Tech Park Drive, tax map 29, parcel 5.12. I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by Five Star Investment LP. Mr. Logan.
This is a site plan request at 290 Tech Park Drive, and the project is called 290 Tech Park Industrial. They are proposing a building of 48,000 square feet, a new industrial building. This is just north of I-24, Tech Park Drive tees into Industrial Drive, and this is the only vacant lot left on Tech Park Drive. The rest of the lots have already been developed. So, the property that's existing there is 4.47 acres. The proposed building would be one-story, and this site is not contained in an overlay There's a zoning map on the screen, so the dark blue color is all I-2, which is Heavy Industrial, so all of the neighboring properties are the same zoning. And these are photos of the street that show the front edge along Tech Park Drive, and you can see this whole area was graded a long time ago, so this lot is primarily just a flat lot. There are some trees and landscaping along the road. This is the first site plan that was submitted, and then the latter one, so you can see the changes there. So, they are proposing two driveways off of Tech Park. This would be for automobiles and light trucks, and then the heavy truck ingress egress is further to the north. Of course, earlier versions had parking on both sides of this entrance road, and that parking, some of it, has now been removed. And there's been several technical items over the last two months, but the applicant's worked with staff to take care of all those issues, and I believe there may just be one comment left about fire access. Also, the fee in lieu for sidewalk has been requested by the applicant, and that's noted there in the report under technical items. The calculated fee in lieu would be $26,940. And that completes the report. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Fire marshal on item one, has that been taken care of?
Yes, sir. All technical comments have been addressed on fireside.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
I appreciate the applicant working with us and addressing all the items they had, the workshop and this board's items too. With that, I'll make a motion to accept as submitted.
Motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second for Mr. Rutledge? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. On to item number three, first item under new business. Concept Plan, 703 Waldron Road, 313 residential lots and 162 townhomes on 120.71 acres, requested by SEC Inc., property located at 703 Waldron Road, tax map 29, parcel 22.02, R3 High Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by John M. Gilland Living Trust. Mr. Logan.
This request is for approval of a concept plan at 703 Waldron Road. This property is 120 acres, 120.71. The applicant's proposing 313 residential lots and 162 townhomes. And you can see on the map there, this large area that's outlined in blue that sits south of Woodland Hills subdivision. And you can see, a little bit closer there, you can see its proximity to the other subdivisions and to I-24 off to the north. It's a heavily wooded site currently, and the next slide is the zoning map, so you can see this green area is R3, and that's, R3 is designated for high-density residential development, and that is the current zoning of the property. And the applicant would not be requesting to rezone the property, so that would not be part of the request. These are some photos that were taken about two weeks ago, primarily the only gated entrance that you can really find. There is a gate there on South Waldron Road, and the day that the pictures were taken, I think they were doing some core samples on the property. So, this is a little bit closer view, and you can see the equipment that was there. And just about in the center of the photo is the gate that's existing. And then moving around, this is another photo of that gate that allows access to the property. And the plan that was submitted, there's the entirety of it on the screen. So, zooming in, you can see that the townhomes would be located closest to Waldron Road, and then the single-family development would be located toward the rear as you move into the property. And then this is the newest one that was submitted after the workshop two weeks ago. Visually, there's not a ton of difference, but there are some notations that were added. But the general layout is the same even with the newest slide. So, this is zooming in, closer view to the proposed townhomes, and this is Waldron Road here, running north and south. So, these would be located close to Waldron Road. And the entire plan, of course, is in your packets with all of the closer views of each street, but basically, the single-family is just laid out as a typical single-family subdivision of lots, but the townhomes are the only area that would not be located on those lots. They did add a note, you can see it there, that the multifamily buildings would be 30 feet apart minimum, and that's one notation that was not on the plan two weeks ago. And I believe it's all been covered here. So, that completes the report. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, sir.
Would the applicant please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record?
John Miner with the SEC, 850 Middleton Street Boulevard, Murphysboro.
Terry Erasmus in BRS 2000 Mallory Lane Franklin.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, guys. And sorry I missed you the other day. We passed there in the hallway. So, my first question is, is we just did some roundtable discussion yesterday on some rezoning plannings that we have going through the city, and a lot of that area is going to be going to state residential. That being said, would you guys be willing to look at doing that, at at least making it maybe a single-family all the way through, maybe an R1 zoning instead of these homes here? You understand, and I just want you to know, my concern here is that, you know, with Arbor Ridge at 500-plus homes, and this one at 475, on a road that's not, it's not going to handle it, like, it's not there. It's coming, but it's not there, and so that's a huge concern for me.
Sure. And I understand that. It's zoning by right, and we could put 1,800 lots out here, so we meet the code.
So, that's a no?
Yes, sir. Yes, it's a no.
Okay. Yeah, I'm a pretty simple guy. Easy. That being said, I know the mayor's made some comments about you guys are going to follow the upcoming standards that we're setting for this type of structures. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah, whatever the new...
My question to staff is, is that are they bound by that, by agreeing to that without it being completed? Because I know we were talking yesterday that they're grandfathered in if it's approved. Is that correct?
Since it's by right, they wouldn't have to do the, basically, development standards.
They would not?
That's not in there, yeah. That's not in our ordinance currently.
All right. If they're agreeing to that, can we get it in some type of writing?
We really can't agree to what we don't know, just so you know. I mean, we're not, you know, I don't know what the new design standards are. We're more than happy to look at them.
So, you said you're going to agree, but you're not going to agree?
So, what I'm saying, sir, is that if you can tell me exactly what the design standards are today, then yes, I'll agree to them.
I would, as a board, I would say we could definitely get that to him. Would you guys agree with that?
This, this being at concept, would that be something that we tackle now, or at site plan?
So, do you have the design standards you can give to us?
They're not finished.
Then I don't know how I could agree to them tonight.
Okay.
I thought they were something that was, I thought there was something that was already finished.
If I may, Mr. Rutledge.
Yes, go ahead.
Is that something that, that we can discuss, that site plan?
Sure. Absolutely.
Okay. And I'm good, and I'm good with that. It's unfortunate that you won't go the other way with that. I guess it's, the drainage, that was my other question, I'm sorry. Lot of wet property streams, stuff on this. Are you guys ready for more detention ponds if it's needed? Are your lots buildable lots?
Everyone is a buildable lot. We won't ask for any variances. The detention will be coked by the engineer and handled according to TDEC and your current requirements. As you can see on the master plan, we are not impacting any streams. In fact, we are actually staying completely out of every stream and the buffers. So, we've done our best to make sure that we, we preserve what's there.
And what about green space? Have you guys thought about putting any kind of walkways or anything through there?
There'd be sidewalks throughout the neighborhood, so...
But nothing is like a greenway to walk?
Whatever's required by the code. Yeah, whatever's required by the code.
Any other questions?
That's all I got.
I guess the question I've got is, this is a heavily wooded area currently, and with the areas around it established and looking nice, what's your, do you have a concept of what you'll be looking for as far as landscaping, the development, so it doesn't look like it's just clear-cut down?
Yeah, I mean, again, we won't, we won't clear any of the buffer areas along the streams, and whatever's required by code is exactly what we'll do.
In the workshop, we discussed the industrial area to the east, providing an additional rear setback requirement for those lots, so that they would have more of an established tree line preserved.
I'm just thinking that it would look nice. I understand whatever code requires, but you're, you're building in a nice location.
Right.
And so, it would look nice to have an established look versus just a couple shrubs here and there amongst the housing itself, is what I'm saying.
And I understand exactly what you're saying. If there's, and I, I totally get what you're saying, I, what I'm, if there's a code requirement for us to plant X number of trees on the streetscape, that's what we'll agree to do. Now, will we do more than that? Oh, absolutely. I mean, you know, the houses are going to sell for, you know, $250 a foot. I mean, that's what the market is today. So, it's whatever the market dictates, but I can't do any more than the code requires because it's not a rezoning.
I mean, you could, you just don't want to, right?
No, I didn't say I didn't want to. That's not what I said. What I said, John, was that if the houses, if the builder wants to plant more, then they'll plant more depending on what the market dictates.
And, and once again, I think that's a subject that we'll cross at site plan, so we won't be able to address that.
And my biggest concern is, like you said, the one on Woodland Hills, and then the ones that are on the other side, that are, all those properties on Blair Road that have those large lots that are fixing to go state residential, and they've got that secluded area in the back of their properties, that now that you have this subdivision come up next to them, if they could have some type of buffer there, that's, I think that's, is that what you're...
Yes, but I'm also talking just about the character of just the general neighborhood itself and not just putting houses and greens and yards, et cetera.
And what I'll say to that is, yes, there'll probably be more landscaping than you would normally see in some other neighborhood, but we're not going to agree to do it except for whatever code is required. But would we do it? Sure. Absolutely. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I do have one last question. You don't, I know with Arbor Ridge, there has been some issues or something with that development. You don't foresee any type of lawsuits or anything with this development, do you?
I, the only thing I'll say, it's zoning by right.
I just want to see how we're going to move forward with this, because I've been waiting on Arbor Ridge.
Yeah, I'll step in at this point, I guess. I mean, if you're asking whether there's pending lawsuits on this development, I think that's permissible, but if you're asking about another development, it's...
I am, I'm asking about this development, if there's, as long as there's nothing involved in this that, that's going to hamper this, this process for you.
I guess I don't really understand the question. It's zoning by right, and we're staying within the code.
Okay. I mean, I'm just asking if there's no legal, no legal problems within this property that you're going to be facing going into this?
Not that we're aware of, no.
Okay. That's all I'm, I'm just asking.
Any further questions?
If you would, we discussed the workshop, the entrance. I see you made some changes. Can you just go through those, just so we can understand that?
Yeah, so what we did, as you requested, is we did a right D cell lane off of Waldron Road into the project, and then we did a left turn lane out of the project, as not to have so much traffic sitting there while people are turning left.
And with the city's plan of widening Waldron Road, how will that tie into your concept plan here?
We've actually, we've actually agreed to dedicate that right away. I mean, by right zoning, we could require the city to pay for it, but we're not. We've actually made the plan based on the new road width, and we'll dedicate that right away to you. I think it's an acre and a quarter or something like that.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go ahead.
Further questions or comments?
I don't have a comment in general about this development. It's R3. They've put forward a plan that, you know, fits the guidelines, but I do have a concern in general that I think the planning commission needs to seriously consider with the amount of growth we've got going on in this area and the lack of infrastructure, because in a .69 mile radius, we've got 1,000 condos, townhomes, and single-family residences planned, approved, and we're on our agenda. And I know, you know, like the mayor said, we've got plans to widen Waldron Road. I don't know anything about Blair Road, but if it's not done and all this building occurs, I mean, it significantly impacts the quality of life for the citizens. And, I mean, the market's booming right now, you're right. People will buy anything right now, and they will pay any price for it. But when that goes away, we still want Laverne to be a place people want to live in, and, and I feel like we're getting to a point, if we don't do something besides just keep building, that, that we're going to put ourselves in a really bad situation, and people are going to have to live with that for a long time. We've already got people moving out because they don't like it, and it hasn't even started yet.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further questions or comments? With that, we will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the concept plan as submitted.
Motion to accept concept plan as submitted. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Oh.
So, Mr. Rutledge and Ms. Saunders? For the record, Mr. Rutledge and Ms. Saunders voted no. Motion passes. Next item. Item number four, Final Platte McCormick Place, 28 lots on three open space lots on 8.62 acres, requested by Wumble and Associates. Property located on Bill Stewart Boulevard, tax map 14, Group A, parcel 1.01, and tax map 14, parcels 36, 36.01, and 36.02. PDR Plan Density Residential with a R2 base medium-density zoning district, property owned by Abnan Treatment. Mr. Logan.
This is a request for Final Platte at McCormick Place, and McCormick Place is located on Bill Stewart Boulevard. The proposal here is for 28 lots and three open space lots on 8.62 acres. And looking at the screen there, you can see the layout of this property. So, this is the current fire hall on Bill Stewart Boulevard, and this is the property directly behind it and to the north. And there's the zoning, which of course is PDR with the R2 base district. And they are proposing 28 residential lots. Here's some photos of the property. So, this is looking north on Bill Stewart Boulevard. And then the fire hall is to the right in this photo, and this just shows the property and the trees as they look today. The applicant did submit an updated plat, this is the plat from the workshop, and then you can see the updated plat on the screen. And they did address, in this revision, they did address all the comments from the workshop, and there's not any remaining, so that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
I wasn't at the planning, but I recall earlier, when this was being discovered or discussed, along Bill Stewart and kind of shading or obscuring the stormwater detention unit which is on the road, is that in the plan? Because it doesn't, I can't see if there's, where the trees would be here.
That was part of the landscape plan with site plan.
So, it's there. Okay. And then, I guess my other question would be, is there any type of utility that comes in? So, like when, on Dick Buchanan, I've seen this, as you head towards Sand Hill, there's a utility where it looks like, must be power, and then it's got a chain-link fence around it, and then barbed wire over the top of that. And I'm wondering if there's any type of utility that's either road frontage or where that would be as a...
They would have had to have shown that.
Okay. All right.
Name and rec, name and address for the record, sir.
Annie Wumble, 216 Centerview Drive, Brentwood, Tennessee. Now, there are no utilities like you're describing. There will be water and sanitary sewer and storm sewer, the normal stuff, those will all be underground. There will be a mail center that will do, but it will be on an open space lot, and we did commit to do the screening you asked about between Bill Stewart and detention pond that is in the site plan. That, that type of detail is for construction, and construction plans generally doesn't show up on the final plat, but it is in the project.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for applicant?
Mr. Wumble, we discussed during this process, although this is the final plat for the subdivision, there was discussion about on Bill Stewart of putting the lining the road, so we have some turn lane in there. Is that still part of the plan?
The turn lane is still in there. All of those details, the dimensioning of the turn lane is in the construction plans. We had proposed doing two 11-foot traffic lanes and then a third 12-foot lane. We were asked to revise the plan to provide three 12-foot lanes, which we have done. And then whatever power poles are located in that area, if they don't already have a light on them, we'll add lights to keep that well lit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
Just remind me, I don't remember, are we doing underground electrical utilities for this as well?
No, it'll be overhead, just like everything else in the area.
And I know this question was probably answered, and I apologize, because I didn't remember going back that far, but is there HOA or something that will take care of those open space lots, those three lots?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else? Entertain a motion on this item.
Motion to approve as submitted.
Motion to approve.
Our second.
With a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item number five, site plan packaging fulfillment, new building addition totaling 14,625 square feet on 4.15 acres, requested by Huddleston Steel. Property located at 1241 High Quaker Boulevard, tax map 17, parcel 30.01, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by Mark L. Modelli, Natux, and Mr. Logan.
This is a request for site plan approval at the packaging fulfillment facility, and this is located on High Quaker Boulevard. You can see on the screen, outlined in blue, this building, it's right on I-24, so it's sandwiched between High Quaker and I-24. And a closer view shows the current building and the parking that's arranged around the building. The existing parcel is 4.15 acres, and the zoning map shows I-2 Heavy Industrial in the dark blue, and this whole area is I-2 Heavy Industrial. The only area that's not is, as you move closer to Waldron Road, which is zone commercial. This site is not in overlay district. There's some site photos of the existing building. See the monument sign in the front? And then this would be the northwestern side of the building where they load and offload That's the older site plan, and then this is the latest submitted by the applicant. So, this shows the site with the addition that's proposed, and the new building addition will be 14,625 square feet. And closer view there shows the proposed addition. There were several comments at the workshop that needed to be corrected, and those have all been done with the latest submittal, so there's no comments. The only item listed is the fee in lieu for sidewalks, and for this site, it will be $23,640. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Is there a applicant here? Mayor, do you have a question?
Yes, this is the fire marshal. I know we had some discussion at the workshop in regards to rear access. Are you satisfied with this, this adjustment to allow traffic to go through?
Yes, sir. So, to stay consistent with the other extensions of the access, the engineer agreed to the follow suit with the stand piping and the additional man lighters to go along the back sides of the building that would allow additional fire access for fire suppression tactics if needed. that would allow additional fire access for fire suppression tactics if needed.
Name and address, please, sir.
Eno Jarrell with Huddleson Steel Engineering in Murfreesboro.
The first question was answered in regards to fire. Is the 23,640 acceptable amount for the fee in lieu?
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm.
Does anyone have any further questions on this item?
I guess, just to reiterate, you had said that this building would replace all of the semis that they're parking back there, storing stuff in, so you wouldn't still have them back there?
There won't be any room back there, and that's, that's what, they use those trailers for, storage. And they're going to have it indoors now, yeah.
So they're not going to move those to the front of property or anything like that? They're, they're going to leave the side.
Yeah, they'll, they'll be gone somewhere. They got, they do have another parking on the other side. They may have put a few, but, but they'll be, they'll be replaced. There won't be any trailers on that side over there.
Any further questions? Entertained a motion?
Make a motion to accept as submitted.
Motion to accept, the mayor called. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rutledge. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Item number six. Final plat, the retreat at Finch Branch, Section 2, 31 lots on 12.89 acres requested by SEC Inc. Property located off Irvin and Greenwood Drives, tax map 17L, Group A, parcel 8.04. R2 medium density residential zoning district. Property owned by Robert and Joan Walden. Mr. Logan.
Request is for a final plat approval for the retreat at Finch Branch, Section 2. And this area is located off of Greenwood and Irvin Drives. Also, it's connected with Centennial Drive. Centennial Drive's been extended into this entire development. So you can see outlined in the screen, or outlined on the screen in blue is the subject area. It is 12.89 acres. And the development is proposing 31 lots, and these are all single-family. This property is zone R2 medium density, which is the reddish-brown color on the screen. So R2's medium density residential. And here's some site photos as they have to cross Finch Branch to get to this section. So you can see the construction's ongoing out there. And this is the plat submitted by the applicant for the Planning Commission workshop, and then the latest plat that the applicant submitted. So this large, this area is basically one large cul-de-sac that will terminate to the west, and then the shorter streets just tee off of that main cul-de-sac. And all of the technical issues that were outstanding have been addressed, so that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Do we have any questions or comments on this item?
One question, Mr. Chairman. If you could bring the applicant up, please, if you would.
If you'd be so kind, name and address for the record, sir.
John Minor with SEC, 850 Middle Tennessee Boulevard, Murfreesboro.
Just one question. All these are all buildable lots, including 146. They're all buildable without any variances?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the applicant? Entertained a motion.
Motion to accept as submitted.
Motion to accept is submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item. Conceptual site plan, Brookside Park, proposed city park with soccer field, walking trail, shelter, and other amenities on 1.25 acres requested by the city of Laverne. Property located between Mountain Top Trail and Peak Top Trail. Tax map 29H, Group B, parcel 82. R2 medium density residential zoning district. Property owned by the city of Laverne. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is a conceptual site plan of Brookside Park, and this park is being proposed on the south side of Laverne. And this property consists of an acre and a quarter. You see there on the screen, the property is located between Mountain Top Trail and Peak Top Trail. And currently, this property is owned by the city of Laverne. So a closer view there shows the two cul-de-sacs of Peak Top Trail, Mountain Top Trail. And this property is zoned R2 medium density residential. And these are some photos of the area. So this is coming down on Peak Top Trail as you approach the land. And here in the photo, you can see this property drops off roughly eight feet, maybe 10 feet from the cul-de-sac when you're standing in the cul-de-sac. This is another view. This is looking over the creek to the other road, which is Mountain Top Trail. So in your packet, by now you're probably familiar with this context, map that shows what's being proposed. So you can see, this park would be located in a large residential development that has a lot of homes already built. And those homes are on both sides of the creek and provide a convenient location to get to the park. So there are several amenities being proposed, and they're also in your packets. One is a soccer field. There's also a shelter being proposed. They're going to extend the walking trail. There is a, an existing walking trail that drops down into this area, so they would be extending that. And there's also, I believe, maybe three different types of playgrounds. There's a spin zone, some other playground equipment that would be part of this park. And part of the grant requirements that are being utilized for this project, part of those requirements call for this project to go before the Planning Commission. So that's the primary reason that it's here. And that's the last slide and the end of the report. So we happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Do we have any questions or comments for staff on this item?
Is there any, is there any fencing on this, on this project? Do we know?
Mr. Brown?
I don't think there is at this point.
I just wanted to make sure if there was, we got the black-coated fencing like we've been asking everybody else to do.
Yeah, like, since it's a grant process, of course, we're still working with the state on that. So if, if they, if there is an area that we end up needing fence, I'll make sure that it is the black vinyl coated.
Thank you.
Are we still working on the parking?
We went, we decided to stay with the existing parking for the simple reason that it's, it's designed to be a pocket park. So the parking is very similar to Macon Park, which is another park, pocket park here in the community over off of Jefferson Pike.
Any other questions or comments?
No, no offense, but there's going to be 1,000 more homes there to use that park, so. They probably don't need parking.
Those are two separate items. Let's keep on track. Any questions in regards to Brookside Park? That will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve as submitted.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number eight. Recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for subdivision acceptance. Lieutenant Frank Walkup, Phase 1 and 2. Property located off Jones and Noel Road, requested by Womble and Associates. Excuse me. R1 low-density residential zoning district. Mr. Logan.
This item needs to be pushed to next month. They're, they're not ready for acceptance yet.
Very good. Do we need to do that as a motion to defer? Yes. I'll make a motion to defer this item to the next.
Our second.
Month with a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We'll be discussing this next month. Item number nine. Recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for subdivision acceptance. Minerva Village, Phase 1. Property located off Sand Hill Road, requested by Womble and Associates. Medium-density residential zoning district. Mr. Logan.
Same on this one. It needs to be pushed to next month, so we'll, we'll need a motion to defer.
Make a motion to defer this item?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We'll discuss the, motion passes. We will discuss this next month. Item number 10. Motion to conduct a public hearing on August 30th, 2022 for Laverne Planning Commission Resolution 2022-02, which will amend the city of Laverne subdivision regulations to comply with Public Charter 1128 that prohibits the Planning Commission from generally requiring the dedication of land or payment of fees in exchange for the approval of the development of property. So with this, I will pass this and over to the attorney, if you'd like to give us a summary.
Sure. We talked about this a little bit last time we were at the workshop. Basically, this just says that you have to have a good, a good reason to require dedication of land with the approval of development of property. And a good reason is, is really the constitutional standard. Health, safety, general welfare. This is something we've been doing forever. This has kind of put some, put some teeth in it. My understanding is this, this public hearing will be on August 30th, and then would be taken up for a vote immediately after at the, at the meeting.
Good. Do we have any questions or comments on this item? One? With that, the motion needs to include the date to whoever makes it.
I make a motion to conduct a public hearing on August 30th, 2022 for the Planning Commission Resolution 2022-2 to amend the subdivision regulations to comply with Public Chapter 1128 that prohibits the Planning Commission from generally requiring the dedication of land or payment of fees in exchange for the approval of development of property.
I have a motion and?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We will be having that meeting prior to next month's regular meeting, correct?
We're about here.
Huh?
Yeah.
Before next, next month's regular meeting.
That's correct, right. The public hearing before the meeting, right.
Perfect. And final item. Item number 11, bonds and letters of credit. Mr. Burke?
Everyone should have a bond list. All the lots are up to date. Now, there is one subdivision, the, I think it's Central Park Commercial. It's August 14th is the expiration on it. Juliet's reached out to the, to the bank on that one, and they have said it is in the process of being renewed, and we should receive it any day now, so everything is up to date.
Very good. Thank you very much. That being our final item. Thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned.